This time, I'll call the meeting of the Templeton Board of Selectmen to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. The first item on our agenda is our Town Administrator Report.
Mr. Chairman, my report will consist of a review of the budget, the most recent update of the budget, and the warrant, which was put together today was the deadline for the warrant, so I have a warrant for you. If you want me to do that now, or I can wait until you go through the order here.
It doesn't matter, we can take care of some of these other items first, that'll be quicker, and then.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. The next item that we have on the agenda is the reappointment of John Kaplis as the Veterans Services Director. We received, we actually have two items under this agenda item. One, we received a memorandum requesting the appointment of the following individuals to the Community Veterans Oversight Board. Chair is Michael Currie, co-chair is Hal Bergerewa, secretary is Christine Chappellis, and treasurer Ted Fuer. We received that request for an appointment, for appointments. And then we also received a letter from the chairman, Michael Currie, at the Veterans Oversight Board, an endorsement and a request that we, again, that we reappoint our current Veterans Services Director, John Kaplis, to again serve another year's term with us. Do we have any, do I have a motion regarding the request to appoint the Community Veterans Oversight Board as red?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just, John, all of these people are town residents?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
And they're all veterans.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So we have a first and a second, if there's no further discussion, Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you. And then the next item, as I said, was the reappointment of our Director of Veterans Services for the statutory one-year extension for John Kaplis, who also resides in Templeton. So thank you for coming here today. I don't know if you wanted to say anything, or if anyone on the board has any questions.
I mean, it was a pleasure to catch here. I mean, obviously, having our own veteran service agent, it's blossomed. I didn't realize how it would need, the service was needed in town until I got here. As you can see with the amount of members, et cetera, of the veterans that are coming forward that need the assistance, but yeah, it's been, it's been great so far, so far so good. I'm loving what I'm doing.
And then, and thank you very much for the work that you do, because obviously, having that located both in Templeton, then also at your direction as well, has proven to be extraordinary for the veterans in the community, which, and that's not just someone's opinion, it's very easy, because we can obviously track the amount of benefits that are, that are going out to veterans, we can, it's very easy to see that over the course of the last year, that many more veterans are in fact receiving services, and a higher degree of services than they were previously. So thank you for your work with that. Do I have a motion to appoint John Kaplis for the statutory one-year extension of his term of service as the Director of the Veterans Services for Templeton?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second, are there any further questions? Yeah, John?
The term of the appointment, start date, end date?
Is it fiscal year?
It's, no, it's April 1st, through March 31st.
April 1st to March 31st?
Through March 31st, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. Just be sure to put that in the minutes, though.
Yeah, I will.
I'd like to thank you for coming and stepping up and filling a vacancy that we had, and providing our veterans the services that they, and the benefits that they really deserve and need.
Any other questions or comments from anyone on the board? If not, Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well, so thank you very much for your work in town, thank you. Okay. The next item that we have is action on veterans' town bylaws, the warrant article, which I know that we'll be going through the warrant article by article in a little bit, but I don't know if the Town Administrator wanted to make any comments regarding those, or just?
It's a long, long bylaw. I did work on it much of the afternoon, actually trying to put it into the warrant. I think there are some places where we can reduce the size, but retain the essence of it, so when we get to the warrant, I guess your decision is whether or not it stays on the warrant, and if it stays on the warrant, I think I can work with John, we can trim it some, because it's really, it's 13 pages, and it's a lot to read. And I think, I think some of it, I think some of it can be reduced.
And we won't need the actual final language until much closer to the town meeting, which is May 16.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you very much. The next item that we have on the agenda is to the fiscal year 2016 budget, and I believe that we have updated figures if Mr. Merkel would like to discuss.
I do, and I gave you.
Since I've recused myself from the budget process, I'm gonna go sit in the audience for this part of it.
Okay. Well, there are some big-ticket items that I've asked our new town accountant to review, and after the review, I think we have some interesting and some very good news to report. First of all, on debt service. It has been the practice of the town to include the entire amount that we have borrowed in the debt service line, when in fact, Water Department debt, taken out through the, what used to be called the Mass Water Resource, and it's now called the Mass Clean Water Trust, provides a subsidy. And when the, I understand, when the bills come in, we get a net bill, rather than the full amount. So they actually plug in the subsidy, and so that means that the debt service line has a surplus in the, in the budget that I gave you originally, also in the fiscal 15 budget. And so what I've done is that I've provided the number, the net number, that we will have to pay, the outlays, and so that's a significant savings. The other savings that have been incorporated into the budget, we're only going to be doing one audit in fiscal 16. Remember, we paid for two audits in 15, so there's a savings there as well. But if you take the debt service line, you'll see, I had asked Kelly to get, give me an update of this, and as you can see, at the bottom there, that's, the bottom right-hand number is the actual amount that we're going to be paying in fiscal 16 on our debt. And that's the net number. So I plugged that into the budget, that represents some savings. The next item is retirement. I've been confused on retirement allocation for a while, and I know we've had some back-and-forth with Light and Water, who have questioned the allocation. In other words, the entire bill is paid by the town, and then we allocate out to the non-general fund departments, water, light, sewer. And I know there was back-and-forth in the fall, because Light and Water felt that the payroll that we had was not accurate and up-to-date, and so that's been changed, it's been updated, and Kelly has done a reallocation of Worcester County retirement assessments, and as you can see, the assessment for the town next year is going to be $405,000. We had a significantly higher number in there in the earliest version of the budget. So was it four, let me just check and show you what it was. Here we are. The amount that we had in there was 453, so it's down to 405. So there's a savings there as well. And the total hasn't changed, next year we're going to be paying 624, but then we allocate out to the other departments. And the last item is, I had asked for a review of health insurance costs, and also the whole allocation. And the number that I have circled over there is the number that we presently expect, if there's no change, and that includes the 8.9% increase in health insurance costs. That would be the town charge. The other charges are reflected there to the other departments. So basically, we get one big bill, we pay the one big bill, we get 25% of that reimbursed by the employee, and then we allocate to the non-general fund departments on that. So it works the same way, fairly complicated as you can see, but what I had asked for originally is the run rate monthly, you know, how much are, how much is our allocation for health insurance for everybody by month? And you can see that we have those numbers there for you to look at. Then we took the average, she took the average, and then added the estimates for April, May, and June, came up with a grand total. This, remember, this is health, medical on the one side, dental on the other side, then allocated the employee 25% share, the employer 75% share, and then allocated out town, water, light, and sewer. And so that number is also more favorable than it was, and so when you, when you add in those changes, you get a different bottom-line figure, and this is, this bottom-line number is what is available.
Thank you.
In revenue to, here we are. This is the revenue, this is what's available to make decisions on for the add-back list. So we've got $319,000.
Thank you.
That's, that's available.
I'm not just defending.
You don't have to spend it all, obviously, but oddly enough, and I didn't plan it this way, the requests, the requests from various departments are $320,000, so. So, it's amazing, huh? But, so I guess the decisions to complete this budget process would be to decide which of these items we should incorporate into the budget.
Does anyone have any questions about the new figures, or anything they'd like to?
The only difference on the add-back list, incidentally, was that I got a late message from the Historic Commission that they want $250, not 100.
Oh, okay.
So.
Oh, it's already in there?
In the new one, yeah. Again, this, I didn't make any judgments about whether or not, this is just what's been requested.
Gotcha.
Didn't make any judgments about whether or not it's warranted. I think in some of these instances, clearly, I think we do need to add some funds, but I think some of it is maybe more questionable, and we'll probably get into some debate on the floor of the town meeting, so.
Will some of the, some of these impact retirement and health employee benefits?
Let's see. Well, as you know, in the current year, the health agent was reduced to 19.5, that did impact benefits. But then the Board of Health increased the hours to 20, and so the net result was, there was no impact for that individual in terms of benefits. We're not, obviously, if you add a police officer, if you add a fire EMS person, chances are that would increase the benefit package.
I thought these numbers included benefits.
Yeah, it does. But I mean, it will.
But it was still overtime.
Yeah, in other words, this is everything, but part of that salary would be paid in benefits, so we would be increasing the number of our employees drawing health insurance benefits.
Yes.
But isn't the fire chief adding a full-time equivalent, so it wouldn't necessarily be one full-time person?
It wouldn't necessarily, he wants an FTE, you're right, that's correct. As far as the others on here, this is, these requests are for small amounts and very part-time, so we would not be impacting benefits.
I think it may be, I mean, I personally would like to see us go through this and vote individual items, to see which ones we would like to add back in. Now, I know that obviously it was on the budget, or excuse me, it was on the agenda that we were going to be doing this today, I don't know if, excuse me, we're going to be discussing the budget today, I don't know if maybe some of these individuals, if they knew that we were actually voting on the particular items, would like to actually come, or we, I mean, we can do it now either, whatever, you know, but I didn't know if maybe someone from the Board of Health, or the fire chief, or police chief, or would may want to be here, or Mr. Chase, or whatnot, to discuss why, or so that basically so you can ask them questions as well, as to why they are requesting those individual items. If you feel that we have enough information to vote on them now, then we can do that, whatever sentiment of the board is.
Now, one of the sticky issues is that the original intent was to move the town accountant to 30 hours, but now that we have this fiscal 13 thing going on, and maybe some fiscal 14, she's working 40 hours, as of, this is the second week. And so I only have 30 here, but in the budget, I've put enough for 40 hours.
Okay.
So I guess a decision's going to have to be made when the work is completed, whether or not to continue with 40 hours, or some lesser amount.
In the interest of hearing department heads' full opinions and thoughts on why they are requesting these certain items, maybe some of them could be cut slightly if, or if we get more information, or have more information, we may be able to trim some down, others, you know, maybe estimates that could actually result in higher costs than what they had originally requested. So I think, at least for me personally, I may want to vote on these individual items at our next meeting, after letting the department heads all know that we're going to be voting on the specific items, so then if they feel strongly about a particular item and want to be here to be able to, not necessarily give presentations or anything, but so that if we have questions, we have someone to present them to, rather than kind of speculating on.
So the big-ticket item would be the Police Department, the FTE for fire and EMS, the highway request, and the health agent.
Correct.
Yeah.
I also had had some, and I know Julie did too, I sent out an email to all of you, and my stuff's not on here, and I had discussed some things with Diane, so I would like her to be here, and maybe I can, do you want me to send my email out again?
Right. No, no, we, you know, we have that, we can act on that, too.
I mean, I think it would be good to have them here, so that we could go back and kind of talk about it. I think tonight we could vote the bottom line on the budget, and then have the discussion on the add-backs. On the add-backs after. Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have anything, John?
The Advisory Board Chairman is on vacation this week. He's asked me to relay some information from our meeting last week, since we have gone through the budget. We came up with a substantial amount of questions that he's relayed to the town administrator that we're looking for answers. Some of it is to look at trimming some, and some, believe it or not, we were looking at doing some questions, there were some items that were, we thought should be funded, they weren't funded at all. So I want to at least let you know that. He'll be giving a response, I'm sure, from the administrator at some point.
I don't have, I don't think I have an email yet.
You don't?
If you would have had an email, we would have gotten it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it yet.
He usually passes all that information along, so we can look at it, add it up.
He's, he's told me, I got an email saying that he's passed out, because we had a discussion about that, and he had quite a long, larger list of questions.
Well, I've been preoccupied with the budget and the warrant, so I may have missed something here, but we'll, we'll square it away.
I just want to relay that to you, that there was question from the Advisory Board, as a whole.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I just, well, before we actually take up and vote these, I think I'm agreeing with everybody here that we should give people the opportunity to make their case before we vote.
Right, oh, right. Do we want to vote the, the non-add-on items, the rest of the budget as presented today? Do we feel that we have enough information to do that? And then knowing that there is $319, kind of, that is still to be allocated, that then we can go through and vote when we have the department heads here?
Yeah.
Do I have, do I have?
Julie said it was.
Yeah. Do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
First and a second, any further discussion?
I, I thought we were coming in here and we were looking at maybe, maybe being able to fund the raises.
Yeah.
And that was it.
Right. Yeah, wasn't really planning on, yeah.
This is really good news. So, you know, I think that's, that's what I thought we were going to have to do. So this is awesome news, but I think we do need more input before we make a final decision.
So any other discussion before we vote? If not, Julie?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So then at our next meeting, we will be tackling the fiscal 2016 add-back list.
Okay.
The next item we have is to discuss the town meeting warrant.
Well, here it is. You have a paper copy, and I'll try and go through it, so that folks who are here can take a look. This is the first draft. What I've done is I've put onto the draft all the requests that have been made. Obviously, didn't make any judgment, that's the judgment of the selectmen in terms of what stays on and what comes off. So we have some boilerplate items. First, by the, first item, Mr. Chairman, is to decide when, what time in the morning on Saturday the meeting will take place.
I believe there's been some discussion, not amongst us, but just people with the town clerk and whatnot, whether it should be 9:00 or 10:00 a.m. Last year it was, I'm trying to remember, I can barely remember last week.
It was at 10:00.
It was at 10:00.
Yeah, it was at 10:00. I know that that works better for some people who have morning things that they need to take care of, you know, before they come and dedicate their day to the town meeting. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on, I don't have a particular opinion either way, so if anyone else has any opinion.
I like 10:00.
Yeah, my only thought with 10:00 is, you know, I mean, at some point, somebody, you know, we're going to want to do some sort of lunch break, so if you do something around noon, you know, you've only been there for two hours, you know, so now you've got two hours, you do a break, and you're going to come back, you're going to do a couple hours, people don't want to stay very late, so if you get to 3:00, then, you know, people are going to want to leave, so that, that's my only thing with starting so late. I think 9:00, 9:00 to 3:00 is a better target.
The good thing is, there's only, if I got that right, 28 articles this year, as opposed to.
Oh, right. 70 and something.
It's not going to take that long.
And then the other, the other issue I think that we should do is, if we decide to have a special, let's not do it within the town meeting, because that takes, you know, that takes up over an hour's time. Let's get the town meeting, the annual's done, and then if we need a special, let's have it on, at another time.
Trying to think if there was, I personally like 9:00, and I may be in the minority, just to kind of get it in and get started, get it done as quickly as possible, not as quickly as possible, but, but like Doug said, when we start at 10:00, we actually start at like 10:15, and, and, you know, then we take the lunch break and getting everyone reconvened, it's nice to kind of get a chunk of stuff done, particularly the, you know, the budget and whatnot are in the first 10 articles, to get those things kind of taken care of before lunch. I, I maybe would like 9:00, but obviously, like I said, I may very well be in the minority in that.
I'll make a motion for 9:00.
Okay. Do I have a second for 9:00?
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, a first and a second. Any further discussion? Julie?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so 9:00 o'clock it is.
Okay, it's 9:00.
Yeah.
Well, we have the boilerplate articles, reports of town, town officers, reports of town committees, financial transfers, we don't have a list of those yet, but there will be financial transfers. We have a shortfall in the veterans' benefits account, obviously, that everyone is aware of. We're going to have to add some money into the accountant's area, and a few other places. Here's the Worcester Regional Retirement System, payments on long-term debt. Now, I actually had, made a call to town council, because if you vote the budget, you're voting debt service, and you're voting Worcester County Retirement. Do you need to do it again? No, I don't think so. So these may come out, because I think they're redundant, and we could end up appropriating retirement twice.
Right.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
The next would be the operating budget.
Can Julie ask a question?
Have we figured out how we're going to pay for the playground?
That's going to be one of the transfers. It's going to be down to around $78,000, because Alan was able to cover some of the costs from his budget, but very frankly, I've asked Kelly to survey all the accounts, tell us where we have money, mostly lost time money, when we had vacancies, and, and money has accumulated in some of those accounts. We had five vacancies at management level at one point, so we have some monies there, we have some, we have money in the town administrator account, and a few other places I think we can cover right now. And the good news is, and I'm sure you, you know from last time, FEMA money is looking good, so that the big deficit of $110,000 in the snow and ice account may very well cover us, because we've applied for 107. So if we get that money, then we are in good, good shape for the end of the year. And if we don't, we'll just have to cover it on the tax recap next year, which is what we did in fiscal 15, so. Point is, if we don't have the money in the spring to cover snow and ice, we don't really have to, so we can do it next year. Doesn't go away, though. Funding the ambulance department, this is also a boilerplate item, as you know, and the unexpendited funds going back into the budget, these are yearly routine items. The whole business of funding the ambulance account, they have a, you know, a reserve account that's reserved for appropriation, and the funds that they receive in Medicaid and other Medicare funds for transports go into that account, and then we appropriate from that account to operate the ambulance service. So this is all standard on the town warrant. Funding the assessors' triennial recertification. I left this in here because this is a three-year item, and we put the money into a special account. Otherwise, the effort's been made to take money items out of the budget and put them in, out of the warrant, and put them into the budget. So the appropriation for the scholarship, for example, that's in the budget now, not a special article. Keep, continuing here, again, the triennial recertification, that's $30,000, and we do that in every year and every warrant. The Monticrist RVT school assessment, again, that's another routine item. Sewer Department budget, also regular item on the warrant. Narragansett Regional School District assessment, another regular item, that's also in the budget. I put, just because, like to see the total amount that's spent reflected in the budget document. budget document. Revolving funds, we do this every year as well, nothing new here. So far, there's nothing new on the warrant. From transfers to stabilization, we, if we, for example, don't, we end up, lightning strikes and we end up not consuming all the dollars that are in the budget for 15, we can transfer money over to stabilization. That's a decision of the town meeting. Community preservation funding, as you know, the Civil War monument needs some extra money in order, the, the bids came in higher than what the town appropriated before. CPC funding, this is basically their distribution of how they will spend their funds. Here's a new one, Cook Pond Estates Pump Station. This came from the planning board.
No, sewer.
I'm sorry.
Sewer.
The sewer commissioner's.
Oh, I'm sorry, the sewer department, one way. They have decided that they're willing to accept this pump station and submitted this. You'll see, we have at the end, a citizen's petition from the residents out there at Cook Pond Estates, asking essentially the same thing. The difference here is that you'll notice that this has a bit, a bit higher standard and it has, it has to be in proper operational condition and there must be a determination of that. So, what the citizen petition says, you know, just assume the pump station and the force main. So, this one is a bit more conditional, but.
And just to reiterate, regarding this article, and obviously we don't vote on citizen's petitions anyway, but on the two Cook Pond Estate articles, I've recused myself from all matters, having to deal with it because of an unrelated lawsuit involving the developer, so I've recused myself from those items, so I will not be voting on either one of those.
This one came in today, the Agriculture Commission wants to increase the membership. We have several zoning amendments. The planning board has already had hearings on two of these, and they're having a hearing on the third item, the discontinuation of Templeton Town Roads. This is the Templeton Development Center area, Freight Shed Road, Hill Road, Elliott Road, Norcross Hill Road, and Fernal Road. Planning Board is proposing to discontinue those streets. This is part of a, I would say, a tug-of-war going on between the town and the state as the state abandons the Templeton Development Center and down, or downsizes it into some residential units. The question is, what services will the town be required to pick up? And so, Planning Department has decided we're not picking up maintenance of these roads, they'll be discontinued. Now, this is this very large veterans' bylaw that's being proposed. I won't go through it, you all should have copies of it, but as you can see, it goes on forever. And, no, I'm going the wrong way. Uh, here we go. It just goes on and on and on and on. And as I said, I think, not questioning the intent or the need, I'm saying, I think we can wordsmith some of this, reduce some of the verbiage and get it to a more manageable Consume less paper for the town meeting, because it just keeps going.
I know you did.
As you can see, it just. Okay, here we are. Next item, 23, Insurance Advisory Committee. The advisory board submitted a proposed warrant article that would require the Board of Selectmen to appoint an insurance advisory committee, and this would be required through a bylaw. So, now we have the trench bylaw. This is also extensive, but nevertheless, I guess, I would describe it as an attempt to set some standards for trenching in a public way.
Well, who got from, who submitted the trench bylaw?
I did.
A selectman, Selectman Farrell.
Yes.
I didn't know.
No, we have a bylaw on driveway permits.
Yeah.
But we don't, we have this procedure, the trench, all of the same wording is on the Highway Department, but it's not a bylaw. So, I think making it a bylaw will help alleviate some of the confusion as to when utilities are required to get a permit, whether they pay for the fee for the permit or not.
For digging in public ways again?
For digging in public ways. It's the exact same wording, it's on the Highway website, and, you know, we've had major communication issues in the past where, yeah.
Is someone's the one that was passed, like the trench safety bylaw, did I?
No.
No?
No. Trench safety would, would, applies to trenching anywhere, anywhere, and, and securing the trench so that you don't have cave-ins. This is more oriented towards trenching in the public way and requiring certain standards for replacing the surface roadway when, when it's finished.
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Just for informational purposes, and I look at this, anybody who has a wasting licenses, it's already mandated by Mass General Law, DigSafe, and Code Mass Regulations 520. It defines what a trench is, it defines what you have to do, it defines the exemptions, for instance, water utilities, they don't have to, they don't ask permission, they, they forgive you. You're supposed to get, like, report what you did at least a day afterwards, but, and there is a Mass General Law, I think it's Chapter 82, that says you, you have to get a permit and an escort or an official officer of the town or city, and you may charge for the administrative process of doing bad work for the permit, but if you have a wasting license, you already, when you get your license, you, you agree to these regulations that what you have to do. DigSafe is the state law, you can't dig even on your own land, you can't dig without notifying your supervisor, without notifying DigSafe. It mandates the covering, the, the height of fences, how you, you can't leave a trench open, it even tells you the thickness of the steel plate. So, I mean, I don't know if you're being redundant, I haven't looked at it in a while, I haven't read it, but there is already state law that mandates all of this. It's, you know, you go to Templeton, it's, you know, you're not exempt from the law. State law says you have to do all these things already. Nobody can, like I said, except for like an emergency, you get around DigSafe and you get around the permit before you do the work, and specifically, the exemption they cite is a water utility because it involves public health and, you know, fire and this and that. So, I, I don't know if you've looked at that, and I'm trying to read it, if it's, you know, kind of redundant, but it is all covered automatically in state law, the whole state. You can't dig anywhere without that.
Yes.
Senator to the chair, is that for state roads or is that for town roads?
If you dig more than three feet, that is a trench, you have to get DigSafe and.
That's even on private property.
Yes. You can't dig in your own yard.
And I do issue trench permits out of the building.
And I think, what I read, for me, the, the important part about this, that, and I, and DigSafe is a defined term within here, are the, the regulations, it wouldn't be regulation, but the, the bylaws and portion that involves refilling the trench, so not just how long it can be open, but, so if they, if a, if a nice, brand-new road gets ripped up, they don't just, you know, fill it back in with anything that happens to be lying around, that it's actually filled and patched to the, to these predetermined depths and with, you know, the particular quality that, that's to be used. For me, I thi, I think that's kind of where, at least in this town, we've sometimes run into problems.
Yeah.
Is, is that with what's, what's used to fill back in the roads after the work is done, which may not be a safety issue, because it's after the trenching process is over, but just in terms of the taxpayers that have spent money to have the, the, the roads paved and then to have them kind of ripped up and left, left in a worse condition than when they started. That's, I mean, that's, that's like a two-point, the 2.4s, for me, I think, are the, the part that makes it a little unique, but that's, but thank you very much.
Okay, we have some citizen's petitions. Article 25 is the Cook Pond Pump Station petition that I mentioned earlier tonight. Article 26, a citizen's petition requiring fluoride warnings. Article 27 would have to do with some legislation regarding fluoride. And Article 28, a citizen's petition, a request to the Attorney General to review four items of, of controversy in the town, and that's it.
Can I ask a quick question about 19 and 20, since Kirk's here? I didn't attend the public hearing, so I would know this information or these answers, had I. But the parcels 60 and 61, where are they actually?
The, the, the public hearing's actually tomorrow night, the first two.
Okay.
And then one for the TDC, and those questions are scheduled for.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just real curious, the location of these parcels.
The parcel 60, 61, the ones you're talking about, that's the, when we zoned the Mill Street a couple of years ago, basically industrial land out there, somehow, the, from Lee's Hot Dog Stadium and a couple of small parcels on the same side of Lee's, the track side, a little tiny wedges piece of land.
Yeah.
That, they're unsuitable for, you know, residents, because you, there's not even enough setback there if you put a house there, so we're just trying to fill that in and basically combine our commercial industrial base.
So, it's behind, behind.
Maybe Lee's Hot Dog Stadium, and then because two other parcels behind it, between Mill Street and the tracks, which really just would go good with the commercial industrial piece we already have down there.
And parcel 99?
99 is actually the parcel in Templeton Sound that got left out of the village, village district, is currently, well, it's a former Adams printing, it's now Country District 2.
Okay.
Yeah, it was something that, because don't forget, we recognize our zone by the colored maps.
Yeah.
And for some reason, we're packing those six when we first zoned the entire town. There was a couple of spots where the, the micro got shy, it got fat, and a couple of areas, we were just trying to correct them, and that was one of them.
Okay, that's perfect.
It was supposed to be in the village district, and that's made a civil mess, so people correct that.
Okay, thank you.
In that hearing tomorrow night, just in house.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kirk, what time on the 14th?
All I hear is a 6:30, it'll be after you.
6:30 here?
It is 6:30.
Yes, sir.
Through you to Kirk, on the Norcross Hill Road, is that the road that comes up from Roylston Road, the hill, the Tucker's Road?
It's the one that, if you go, if you're coming up over the top of the, the campus, heading down up towards, you know, Roylston Side, after the barn.
Okay.
On the right, it's a little stretch that goes up until it meets the, the town accepted power line. There's no resident, there's no, right. There's no residents served by any of the, any of the roads that are listed on the list.
Are there any other questions regarding any of the other warrant articles as they were presented? And I think we can agree that, because it seemed to work out very well, last year was having the, both the warrant printout and the printout of all of the motions for distribution, even though obviously it costs paper and trees, it still is, but it saves in grief and medication money.
Well, when, when the board decides, if any, there'll be any additions, I mean, the period for the public is closed, but the board can always add.
Yeah.
Or if you're going to take any off, I'll, I'll get the motions ready and, and we can post those well in advance of the meeting.
Oh, great.
Meeting's mid-May, we can get, we can get the warrant, I would hope, the budget and the motions on the website for everyone by, by mid-April, so they give everybody a month to.
Wow.
I didn't hear you in the beginning, I'm sorry. Are you saying that some of these articles might be combined, because it's redundant?
No, the, the sewer.
I just want to understand.
Commission has, has sent the Cooks Pond warrant article, and then we can't take the citizen's petition off, so.
No, for budget.
They're both going to stay on there.
And buying them.
I think she means the ones that are, the ones that you had mentioned, that were, if, they're in the budget and then we also have, so we kind of both have to raise.
Oh, yes, I, I'm going to have another conversation with Attorney Durensis about that. You know, technically, you do, if, when you, when you appropriate in a warrant article and in the budget, you're doing it twice.
Okay.
So, we're going to try and get that.
I just want to make sure I understood what you said, that's all.
In other words, the standard has been that you put your numbers in for Worcester County, town charge, sewer department charge, we don't put the charges in for light and water anymore since they do not participate in the budget process here, 164. But we, we would do that and we would be appropriating $405,000 through that article, and when you vote the budget, because I have it in the budget, you'd be appropriating that technically again, so we need to, we need to get that resolved, I think.
But these still have to be separate.
And I think it's also.
Maybe not, he's going to check with the.
So, everything that's on here might, okay.
Same would be for the, and I have the school department budget listed in the, the operating budget, just because it's informative as to how much we're spending there for each of the school systems, how much for debt, and it gives you the actual bottom line of town spending on municipal departments and the schools.
Okay.
And, and the sewer, for that matter, so.
Thanks.
We'll have that resolved soon.
And it's, we're, what, more than six weeks out from the, the annual town meeting? We obviously have time to marinate on these and.
Yeah, if you want to make decisions at your next meeting, which, is it next week? Next regular meeting?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, you know, that would be plenty of time to have final versions of, of everything, and I will do the final, I'll do the, the motions, so that if you decide to make a change at the end, we can just make the adjustment. I want to make sure that we get these documents, make these documents available to the general public through the website with plenty of time to, for them to take a look.
Okay. Yes.
Before we vote on the final document, I hope we have some time to have the people in we spoke about on, on the add-back list, and also to hear what the advisory board's concerns are before we take a final vote.
All right.
Even on the warrant?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yes.
I had a question on Article 14, the stabilization funds. You had mentioned, I believe it was at the last meeting, that there might be $100,000.
Yes, I have it, this hasn't been announced before, but again, I asked the town accountant to give me an accounting of our stabilization fund. As you know, in the budget document that I've given you, it says $70,000. Well, she has been going back through fiscal 13 and even before that, and found that in fiscal 12, there's $100,000 that was voted by the town meeting, but it was put in a different account.
Oh, my God.
And is not reflected in the stabilization account, so.
But it's still there in that other.
It's still there.
Oh, good, okay.
Still there.
That's good.
So, that's going to get fixed. That's going to get fixed, and there's also a second discovery of stabilization funds that, I think in 2013, were deposited in an account other than stabilization. So, I think she's more than paid for her, her, her extra hours.
Hours, yeah.
By. By discovering, I think it's about $139,000 in stabilization money that we were not aware of. Now, I, of course, worry that there's going to be some other surprise as we go back through Fiscal 13 and 14 that we're not aware of that might go the other way, but so far, the surprises have been on the positive side for the town.
So, when you were doing, which, I forget which article it is, on transfers to FY15, would those be transferred?
Well, I think we're going to transfer some monies that we have available in some of the various budgets to help cover the playground costs, to help cover the veterans' benefits costs, and we're going to have to start, we're going to have to cover some monies for the accounting department. And then, you know, we'll scoop money from where it's available, mostly in salary accounts, so.
I didn't think we could do FY15 financial transactions at the annual.
Yeah, we can.
But those had to be done at the special.
No, no, we can do it, it's perfectly legitimate to do it at the annual town meeting.
So, we wouldn't really.
So, then what's the need for the special?
That's the way we always did it, though.
Well, if you always do it that way, we can do it that way. I have had experience doing it as an article within the annual town meeting, for the current fiscal year, making transfers for the current, so.
So, then what's, I don't see any need for the special town meetings.
We wouldn't need one, right. That's what I'm saying, I think Article 3, which is financial transfers to FY15, would eliminate, yeah, the special town meeting.
That would be nice.
Right. So, we.
Would the lawyers not get rich like they used to? How can you put it? Would that be a reason for the hour?
Yeah, you'd probably cut an hour, at least an hour, the town meeting might do that.
To town meetings?
There's, there's one other item that I wanted to mention to you, that you won't find on the warrant, and that is acceptance of Chapter 90. That's a redundant article. There's no requirement for the town meeting to authorize the selectmen to accept Chapter 90 funds. I talked to Durensis about that, he said, "Yeah, I know that." He said, "But, we wanted to keep it on the warrant because it was a way of informing the residents of the town that the money that is spent, for the most part, to improve streets and roads, comes from the state through a Chapter 90 grant." So, if you want me to put that back on there, I can do that, so.
I mean, it's nice, just two years ago, we had 70 something, so to, even with citizen's petitions, to be down to, you know, yeah, less than 30 articles is quite impressive, so.
Well, I know that Durensis was like banging his, when he first came, he's like, "Why do you have so many articles? You don't need this, you don't need that article." And it took, it takes a while to get people to understand, you don't have to vote, you know, to authorize the treasurer to borrow, because it's a statute.
And that caused like a mini drama, even moving that.
I know, I know. So, we've made, we're making great strides.
I mean, I think we might get, you know, a lot of questions as to why we went from 70 to 25, so we may want to consider having a document that said, you know, these previous, you know, 30 articles are not included in this and here's the reason why.
Because they're in the budget.
It's a good idea.
John, did you have any?
Yeah, we've spoken about the possibility of getting some new highway equipment and I didn't hear that addressed tonight. Are we, is, we got anything going on on that front or?
My understanding is that any new equipment is going to be purchased with free cash and it's not likely that we will have our free cash certified until, certainly, the fall and we don't have any free cash certified for the current year, so.
But we don't need a, an article to make those purchases?
When we get free cash certified, we do.
We can't, we can't appropriate the money until the state.
When we get the cash, then we can probably have a fall meeting, at the fall meeting, if we get it in time. And the question then is, can you get the audits done in time? If we can get the audits done in time, if we get the books fixed for, for Fiscal 213, so it's, it's backed up to that. As soon as Kelly is finished with the work on 213, so that our records are auditable, then we go to the auditors and then, as soon as they finish their work, the state will certify, I think, an abundance of free cash. But they won't do anything for us now, until we give them the records that they want.
I would just hate to go into the next winter season with what we're working with now.
I think you're absolutely correct and the highway superintendent has the same concerns. And I said, "When we get to the fall, if it looks like we'll have a delay beyond the normal time for the fall town meeting," I said, "The only we can do is to have a special and what you can do is set up a purchase, but not actually commit to it till we can commit the money," so.
Yeah, I don't think we should rush the reconstruction process, though. I mean, it's, thus far, has already proved to be very beneficial to us, so I don't think we want to rush that process just to make the annual town meeting.
No.
It's going well and I think, you know, I will say this, that I think when we get the result here, that we will have financial data for the town that is reliable and that we can rely upon. And, I mean, that's happening now. I mean, I have to tell you, for the first time, I've really felt confident that when I ask for a number from the accounting department, I get something less than sort of squishiness, you know? Well, here's the number, but it might not be right, you know? We're getting better, better information.
Yes, Mr. Bennett.
Mr. Columbus is right, there is, from the capital planning, there was a debt exclusion article for a rubber tow excavator that was put in by the capital planning. It wasn't from free cash.
Oh.
Yes, there was one debt exclusion.
You want that, you want that back on?
I know we spoke about it, but I couldn't, it wasn't coming to me where it was coming.
Yeah, we noted the capital plan as it was presented.
Yes, Mr. Columbus.
Mr. Chair, Article 22, he's, that's the, the bylaws for the veteran services. Do you want me to work with Mr. Merkel to trim that down? So, when you guys review it at your next meeting, would that be something that you guys?
I already reviewed it and I have a lot of notes, too, that I.
Can we email what gets together?
I don't know if I can email it, because I hand wrote all over it, but I'm happy to get together with you guys or just you, if that's all right? Is that all right? So, I made a lot of notes.
Okay, great.
So, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
No, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a, before, I don't know if we're voting them, but there were two other things that, because Alicia and I are going through very detail-oriented, the personnel policy, I forget what we went through last week and I had to look at the bylaws and I found a couple of things. Article 17 says sick leave, full-time town. Because we have a policy, I'm not sure why we have to have a bylaw for that.